Okay, I'll call this workshop session into order. Can I have an adoption of the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Of a second.
Second.
Ms. Linda, roll call vote, please.
Board member Eslick.
Aye.
Board member Miller. Board member Murdock.
Aye.
Vice President Foley.
Aye.
Board member Garrett.
Aye.
Board member Johnson.
Aye.
President Sparks.
Aye.
Dr. Buck, can you present our first item today?
Yes, item, Agenda Item 2.01 is Purchasing Processes. We're going to bring up Dr. Steve Shelton, as well as Ms. Kristi Pataglia, who is a Coordinator of Purchasing, to provide an overview of the purchasing processes here in Lee's Summit.
Thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation tonight. The operations team works under the purpose of providing and supporting and serving our students, staff, and community with integrity and care. And this department encapsulates that purpose greatly. As we seek to serve our students and staff and our community with integrity and care, the procedures and policies that we follow balance that expectation of being responsible stewards and with the taxpayer dollar, but also providing opportunities and experiences for our students and staff in a way that's world-class. And so, this system, the systems that Krista is going to present here in just a moment, provide that great balance between those two tugs and pulls. How do we provide internal controls to make sure that we're doing things well, doing things right, and a good business model, but also meeting the needs of our students, staff, and community in an efficient way? So, very proud to say that Krista is one of the very best in this field. She is outstanding, and because of her leadership, our purchasing and distribution department is one of the strongest that you'll see in any industry, not just in education. So, I'm going to turn it over to Krista. You're going to provide a little bit about your mission, and then we'll move on to the presentation.
Good afternoon, everyone. You will see here our services mission that we've established for purchasing and distribution. And I've been up here, I think back in March, and talked about our mission. And that is to provide exceptional customer service for all of our students, staff, and community by ensuring that we follow those board policies whenever we're looking at contracts, doing bids, following the RFP process, anything that, you know, that we are reviewing and looking at. We are making sure that we are complying with board policy and best practices for the purchasing industry. We want to obtain the best value possible on all our goods and services. Distribution, which is also part of my department, strives to deliver quality products and services in a timely and efficient manner to all district buildings and to the community, because we do partner with the City of Lee's Summit on a lot of things that distribution, you know, there are a lot of services they provide to the community as well. I believe that was you. Okay. I'll just take it. Our comprehensive school improvement plan goals, these will be familiar to all of you. We provide, we will provide high-quality experiences with access and opportunity for each student. We will foster a responsive, caring, and inclusive environment. We will provide meaningful public engagement. Oh, okay. That includes all stakeholders as vital partners in LSRC, LSAR VII education. And we will be responsible stewards and leaders. Board promises, again, I'm sure you're very familiar with this. Meeting each student where they are by utilizing an equity lens in all decisions, actions, practices, and resource support. Increase the achievement of every child through a focus on innovative practices, student well-being, and enhanced accessibility to educational opportunities. Strengthen communication with, that builds engagement, collaboration, and confidence with both internal and external district stakeholders. Many people might think that that's a big stretch for purchasing and distribution, but, you know, we keep all of this in mind as we are going through our daily operations and providing services to our buildings. And, you know, our mantra every day is, "It's for the kids." If there's ever a question, "Should we do something, or shouldn't we?" You know, that is our mantra. We view it through that lens. It's for the kids. Today, we're going to just talk about broadly a couple of the board policies that we consider the meat and potatoes of purchasing and distribution. The first is DGA, which determines who the authorized signatures are for contracts. DJF, which is our main purchasing policy. And DJF AP1, which takes that DJF policy further and gives it the meat and potatoes that we, you know, that we live and breathe every day. You'll see that there are some others listed. Purchasing credit and purchasing cards. DN is surplus school property. Believe me, that's a heavy one for us right now with all of the new bond furniture that we've been purchasing, is what to do with that surplus property. And then GBCA, which is our staff conflict of interest. To dive into board policy, DJF AP1, it provides a lot of definition for our purchasing terms. It defines who the district's purchasing officer is. It provides just general guidelines such as, you know, our district policies and budget guidelines that we, it determines that the district reserves the right to reject a bid for any reason. You know, we have guidelines for our purchasing cards that are there, that are more defined. Purchases must receive account coding and approval from budget managers. For instance, anything for technology, that is run through our Director of Technology. Grants through our Grant Administrator. Construction maintenance, that's the Director of Facilities. And travel is the Budget Manager, of course, and Business Services Travel Specialist. If anything comes to us, these are the questions that we're asking if they fall into any of those categories. Has Dr. Whaley seen this? It's technology. You know, it's construction or considered, you know, construction maintenance. Has Kyle Gurrell seen this? To continue on, it also outlines the timeline to bid for services such as auditing, financial advising, depository, or health insurance, general commercial insurance, and our purchasing cards. So, there are defined amounts of time that we can have those contracts in place. Some are three years, some are six. It defines it in DJF AP1. It also authorizes our district staff to purchase through an RFP process if we feel that a negotiation would benefit the district. It waives the bidding process if it's determined in writing that something is considered a sole source. And we'll define that a little bit later. It allows the district to utilize cooperative purchasing when it's a financial advantage for us, and it saves us time. And it also lists the documents that are needed to maintain for each bid. So, we have a list of things that we go down and make sure that we have those in every bid file at the end of that. I'm just showing you here just a basic, kind of a simplified flowchart of our purchasing process. Our goal was to try and put this on one page. So, in order to do that, it's very, very simplified. But I just want you to know that there's a lot of questions, a lot of thought, a lot of discussion that goes into this process, and there are a lot of steps. So, we don't take any of that lightly. You know, when a purchase is needed, the first question we ask is, you know, "Do we have a contract for it? Do we have a co-op that we can utilize? And we find a co-op to utilize. Does it make sense? Is it considered a sole source?" Those are the first questions we ask. If it's, if we do have a contract or co-op that we can use, then we will go ahead and purchase those goods or services. If we determine that, no, there's nothing available for us, then we're going to determine what the cost could possibly be, and then decide what method we're going to purchase. If the purchase is over fifteen thousand, then we're going to, people are going to work with purchasing. They're going to contact us, and we're going to help them through that bid process. If it's a one-time purchase, and we've gone through the bid process, and it's under a certain threshold, then we're going to go ahead and say, "Yep, you can go ahead and purchase that good or service." If it's not a one-time purchase, we're going to create a contract, and we're going to submit that to the board for approval. Then you can see up there, if it's approved by the board, then, then after that contract has been signed, or that purchase has been approved, we're just going to go ahead and purchase it at that point in time. If it is under, if it is under fifteen thousand, then we're going to acquire three bids, and then follow that same process after we acquire those three bids. So, everything is kind of tied back to our bidding thresholds, which you'll see in a minute. And then also, you know, whether we have a co-op, a contract already in place, or we have access to other means to purchase that. A lot of people ask us, "When you have a formal bid or RFP that you do, how is it evaluated? What's that process look like?" When we first start out with a department, the project manager is what we refer to them as at that point in time, when they come to us and say, "We need to put out an RFP for such." That project manager works with purchasing to develop that RFP. And we always begin with the end in mind. What's the goal? What do you want to achieve out of this? What's important to you when you're evaluating those proposals? And what do you want to get out of it? And how much does it mean to you? Because we want to wait, established with every specific criteria that we're evaluating them on. We choose committee members with that project manager. More than likely, well, I'll say every time, it's end users, those people that are using that contract, because it's meaningful to them. And if we award a contract, and it's not useful to them, then we've just spun our wheels and wasted time. We want to make sure that they're involved in that conversation, they're involved in that evaluation, and that we get the best choice for that particular award. Criteria always includes references and experience, approach, and understanding of the scope of work that we have provided to them. There are applicable resources. Do they have a big enough team to assist the district? Or is this a small shop, and they're only going to give us one person to do a huge amount of work? The best value of the product and service, cost. And then any other value-added services that they bring to the table. Now, this is just kind of a broad, you know, overview of those. We can and do get pretty specific, especially if it's something dealing with software or curriculum. We could have a rubric that goes on for days. It just depends on what the commodity or the service is that we're purchasing. Then after that, that's kind of the first sift. We may come out with what we consider our top three, top four, whatever is determined by the committee. And if they feel that interviews at that time are necessary, then we would go through an interview process, repeat that evaluation, and total those scores together for a composite. And hopefully, if we trust the process and we go through it correctly, then we've got the top responsive bidder that we would award to. The definitions that I referred to, piggyback, we use these quite frequently in purchasing and don't really even think, sometimes people will stop us and say, "Piggyback? What is that?" And that's basically, it's say, for instance, the City of Lee's Summit had a bid for chain link fencing, and we needed a bid for chain link fencing. We can go out there on their website and say, "Hey, City of Lee's Summit's got one. It's awarded to, you know, a pretty good vendor that we know of. The pricing looks good. It's been through the competitive process with them." So, we contact them and say, "Can we piggyback or use your contract and your pricing?" If they've put in their bid, that the vendor will agree to that, agree to extend the same pricing to another entity, another governmental entity or school district. If that language is in there, then we contact the vendor, and we can use their contract and go on our merry way. It's a lot like purchasing co-ops, but the difference is with a co-op, it's a group of entities that have come together. They have, you know, to increase the buying power, they've all come in together. Like, for instance, MACPP, which is a Mid-America Chapter of Public Purchasing that we belong to, they do a joint vehicle bid. So, there could be Jackson County, Kansas City, Missouri, City of Olathe, the Lee's Summit School District, everyone kind of comes together. We put all of our specs in one bid, and we go through that process with a lead agency together. It's awarded, and then we come to the board and ask for your approval on that particular co-op contract, and can we use this to purchase any vehicles that we might need in our white fleet, or, you know, through any of the other buildings. Then a sole source is pretty much just as it is. That is a product or service that is, I'll say practically, available from only one vendor. It could be software that's proprietary, there's no one else that can touch it. It could be a manufacturer that, you know, has manufactured something, and they're the only distributor of that certain thing. We kind of go through those with a fine-tooth comb and really make sure that we vet and make sure that what they're claiming is true. Because, you know, we know in the past that, and it's through no fault of theirs, you know, they say, "Yeah, we're the only ones that provide this service." Well, it could be that there is a one-off. There is somebody else out there that was unknown to them that is providing something very similar. So, we try to do our homework on that and not allow too many sole sources until we vet them thoroughly. Co-ops and contracts utilized. This is a pretty comprehensive list of the ones that we've used. I'll point out that the City of Lee's Summit is on here. You'll probably, Sedalia School District co-op has jumped out at you, Tulsa Public School. It's far-reaching. There are national groups that are big, large co-ops, that that's all they do, is just put out bids on behalf of the governmental agencies across the nation and award those competitive contracts. And it really does help us out in some situations, because they can be quite detailed and, you know, pretty complex. There's, you know, some that you probably do recognize on there. One GPA, Missouri Department of Conservation, you know, the Greater Kansas City, GSA Cooperative Purchasing Program. There's quite a few on there that you probably would recognize. Okay, our bid thresholds are also part of DJF AP1. And you will see currently, these are our bid thresholds. If it's zero dollars to a thousand, we're going to ask, we consider it a micro purchase, and we're going to ask them, "Hey, go out there and look and see, and, you know, provide at least two quotes from providers." And that can be looking on Amazon, or on, you know, another office depot, something like that, depending on what it is that falls in that category. You know, it could also be between a thousand and fourteen nine nine nine. We call those our small purchases, and those do require three quotes. If it's over a thousand dollars, it also requires that they put it on a purchase order. They're not using a P-card for that purchase. It's on a purchase order. And that way, we ensure that those quotes are attached to that. They can also obtain those electronically through Ionwave, our e-procurement software. There's a way to put out quotes and bids through that as well. And then fifteen thousand to forty-nine nine 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 is our mid-purchase range. It's an informal bid process through purchasing. The only difference between that and what we're considering are formal sealed bids, which is fifty thousand and up, is that a bid that's in, that's informal doesn't need to be advertised for two consecutive weeks. Anything over fifty thousand has to be advertised for two consecutive weeks. So, that's really the only difference there between those two. Another board policy that we use is DGA. That is our authorized signatures. And this spells out your wishes as far as what contracts can be signed by whom. You will see that it's also tied to the list that we provide to you, the fifteen thousand and under, and then the fifteen thousand and over. If it's fifteen thousand and under, more than likely, I'm signing those contracts as the purchasing coordinator in my absence for something that's small. You know, Dr. Shelton would be the next person that we would go to for that. Now, if it's over fifteen thousand, that means that it's coming to you first for presentation and approval. And then after your approval, those can be signed by Dr. Shelton, or Dr. Buck, or Linda Ismer as your board secretary. Here's our contract procedure. Again, simplified. If we receive, when we receive a contract in purchasing, we're determining which category it falls in, under or over $15,000. If it's under, then purchasing is reviewing that contract. If there are any changes to the terms and conditions, a lot of things that we look for, indemnification, governing law, you know, privacy, student privacy, things like that that we're looking for in those terms and conditions. And then purchasing usually works directly with the vendor to get those amended. Sometimes they're cooperative, sometimes not. Sometimes if we get to that level where it's really a big deal and it's a big purchase and there's no give, then we might ask Dr. Shelton to get legal involved. Joe Hadley would be called and we would ask for his guidance on that. And sometimes, you know, we ask for his help to actually work with their legal department to try to get that language ironed out to an agreement that we both can agree to. If the contract is over, again, purchasing is reviewing that, making any changes to terms and conditions, working with the vendor on those. And then we are working also with the project manager or the department that brought it forward so that we can get then a board submittal and get that to Linda for the next board meeting. If it's under, then it's going on our under list and we are, you know, providing all of the information that we can get on that contract. If it's a renewal, no renewal, if there's an increase or a decrease in the amount, if there's no change, all of that is captured for that list. And then contract renewal, which I mentioned again, another flow chart. I promise this is the last one, for our contract renewal process. And basically, again, it's asking the question of the project manager or department, "Hey, it's time to renew this. How was your experience? Was it great? Do you want to renew? Want to keep going? You have three more renewals or you have two more renewals?" We let them know what the timeline is for that. If they say yes, we reach out to the vendor, ask them if they want to renew the contract and if they're going to keep it at the same amount or do they require an increase? If they do say that they need an increase, then according to our bid and also to their contract, it is tied to the current CPI. If it's over a certain percentage of the current CPI, then we would have to either bid that back out or bring it to you and justify why we feel that we need to continue with that large of an increase. If they say, "Yeah, we need to renew it. The current CPI is at seven and they say we need 5% more," then that's under the threshold that's been set. We agree to it, we renew it, and it goes on for the next year. Also too, if there's, I will say at this point in time, if there's anything that's happened during that contract where, you know, we're having trouble with a vendor, there's a disagreement or there's an interruption in service for any reason, you know, or they, we have a disagreement on what the actual terms of the contract are, we encourage people to contact purchasing and let us get involved in that because, you know, we're kind of the first line of defense. We consider ourselves the contract administrators on that. We will contact them, see if we can't mediate or work out what the difference is or the problem. And then if we need backup, then of course, you know, we go up the chain of command and hopefully, we don't have to involve legal. Sometimes that may be necessary. This is just kind of encapsulating everything that I've told you for our agreement and our board approval, the less than 15 and the over 15 and what that process is. And just in summary, just again, kind of reminding you what our thresholds are currently for bids, RFPs, and our contracts and agreements. And I'll just close by saying, you know, again, we consider, you know, ourselves to be a meaningful part of this district and that we want to provide, you know, the best process that we can for the district to ensure that we're being fiscally responsible and that we're following the right procedures. You know, we want to be responsible stewards and leaders by utilizing our centralized purchasing strategies in our cooperative contracts when we can. We do have a full warehouse for those of you that are new. And those bids are done, we house a complete mini Walmart, if you may, of commonly-used items that are in categories for office supplies, custodial, medical supplies, you name it. And then provide high-quality experiences with access and opportunity for each of our students. Purchasing and distribution has been part of the SBE Student Work Program since its inception at Lee's Summit High. And up until last year, we have always had at least two or three students that we have hired to work in the warehouse. I think part of the draw was the opportunity to get to drive the forklift after they turned 18. You know, they tell their friends, word gets around, that's always, you know, something that they're drawn to. But those kids, you know, they show up for work, they, you know, are counting, they're pulling orders, they're physically working, you know, they're moving pallets with pallet jacks. They're doing it all. They're using their minds, they're using the computer system, they're doing some physical labor as well, all in a safe environment. But, you know, it's providing a real-life work experience for those kids. And we get a little benefit out of it too, you know. But we pride ourselves in that as well. So when you think of purchasing and distribution, we seem pretty far removed, but not really. There are a lot of touch points and, you know, a lot of opportunities for us to contribute, we'll say. And all with that mantra, "It's for the kids."
So we're the biggest employer in town, which means we are one of the biggest businesses in town. We spend millions of dollars on supplies. We spend millions of dollars on purchase services. And what Krista and her team do is really balance that, the internal controls that we need to have in place to make sure that we're doing that in a responsible, business-like manner, but also that we're nimble enough and flexible enough to serve our students and our staff and our community quickly and efficiently so they can have a wonderful experience within our school district. You can see, this is a very robust and can be a very complex process, but they do it masterfully. At the end of each of our finance committee meetings, we have a long list of projects that are coming up that Krista and all the budget managers are working on. And it's an opportunity for members of the finance committee and the board to kind of peek around the corner and see what's coming. Because what's coming is what Krista and her team are working on in the processes and the procedures that she laid out for you today. And as I said, she's one of the very best in the business. Her department's one of the very best in the business. We're very fortunate to have them. They serve our students and our staff, our community in a very professional way, in a very high level. Any questions?
Okay, we're going to hear from Dr. Buck first and then we'll open up to the board to be able to have discussion.
So if a board member hasn't been over there, it's over there by Lee's Summit High School. I encourage you to do so. And one of the things I want you to check out is we have a custom-made freezer that forklifts go in. There's an individual who spends the majority of their time working there in a freezer and they have a special suit they wear for it. So, you know, we serve 330,000 meals in a full month. And it all runs through, you know, distribution and getting it out to buildings and such. So they do an amazing job. She mentioned a term I just want to explain for everybody. CPI stands for Consumer Price Index and that's a rate of inflation. That's what it is. So when she said 7% right now, I had to guess what CPI is currently. That's, she's talking about the rate of inflation.
Thank you, sorry.
You're fine. Thank you for that presentation, board members. Are there anything that you would like to ask? Vice President Foley?
Thank you. This isn't really a question, it's more of a compliment. I just want to say thank you for everything you do. I appreciate what your department does. I hear, you know, nothing but wonderful things about you. And I know that we have a member of our board that is very much about following the money. And even that person, everything she says is positive about the interactions with the department. And so I just want you to know that we appreciate, I appreciate, how diligent you guys are in finding the best deal, making sure that we get the best resources for the best value every time. Thank you.
I'll say that I'm not alone in that. You know, there's a powerful little team that we consider purchasing, but all of our project managers in our departments, they do an excellent job as well, you know, looking for opportunities for savings, sometimes before they even bring it to us. So, you know, it's definitely quite a network and a team. It's on everyone's mind. So I appreciate that from everyone else.
Board Member Murdock?
I have a few questions for you. First, thank you. But I wanted to revisit something that the board made a decision on a couple of years ago in that threshold, when we changed the threshold that we were going to have come to us from $5,000 to $15,000. Has that been a benefit to your department? Is that still a number that you would recommend? Are we actually still a little bit lower than average?
We are lower than average. It's the same amount of work for us as a department because we're reviewing all of the contracts, no matter where they fall. It's just, if we're sifting them to, you know, the over list, then there might be a project manager that, well, there is a project manager that has to do a board submittal for that. If they're falling on the under list, it's a more streamlined process for them once it gets through purchasing. You know, they can go ahead because they know that it's going to be ratified. And so they have the green light once purchasing has blessed that and added it to the next board meeting list to go ahead and move forward with their purchase.
Board Member Murdock, may I just update the board a little bit? You will see a board policy come before the board policy committee to request that threshold from $15,000 be increased to $50,000. That's a recommendation from MSBA. Dr. Buck asked me to do some research. The city, the City of Lee's Summit, their threshold is $75,000. It's our belief that that's a, that $50,000 number that we're recommending to the policy review committee and to later to the board is an appropriate number.
And that's one of the reasons I'm asking the question, right? Even two years ago, we toyed around with that $25,000 mark and stuff like that and MSBA was already starting to get close to that particular number and that was still kind of on the low end. That's why I was curious.
And to Ms. Pataglia's point, that we would not lose any internal controls. Our internal controls would be just as tight, just as effective, but also it'll provide us a little bit more efficiency in our day-to-day operations.
Which leads me to this other question. Give us a timeline for people who aren't familiar from a bid perspective, when it comes into your office and let's say it has to go through us, how long before that project would actually get to start or that purchase would be made? Versus if it doesn't have to come to us, how much quicker are they able to start something?
If we include the RFP process for those things that are over, it could be up to at least three months, four, six months, depending on the complexity of it. And then the timing of it, when it falls, whether we've met, you know, our deadline for those board packets to be submitted or not, you know, that could add another month to the process or, you know, a couple of weeks, depending on, you know, where we were with that. Versus something that's on the 15 and under, they're providing it to purchasing, we are reviewing it as quickly as we can. Some days are better than others. We've asked everyone to give us at least two weeks, but a lot of times, we're doing them much quicker than that. And then as soon as they're getting the green light from us, we're adding it to the next board agenda list and they are free to move forward with their purchase. So that could happen in as little as a few days or up to two weeks.
And I just think it's important for people to know the difference between those two. So I think that that's an important concept for all of us here to understand. We're going into the big contracts, to your point, $50,000 and above. We would, it's a months-long process that we're going to be going through in order to make sure that it's vetted, comes before us, all that kind of stuff. So my only other question here is on surplus property. How much do we make on surplus property? That's a terrible question because I didn't prep you for that and I'm sorry, so.
Well, I think in my presentation in March, we may have taken it out. I don't remember. We had made that $1 million mark with GovDeals, but that was for the last nine to 10 years cumulative. That's what we've made. Now, I will tell you, you know, there are some things that sell better than others. Sometimes there are bidding wars on things and sometimes we're lucky to get a dollar or $5 out of it. In any case, it's still taking the same amount of effort and time and man work. I will tell you, we have not sold a chair desk combo in the last six years.
Shocking to me, shocking.
No one wants them, I don't understand. We actually try, we had to get very creative because we were overrun with those at one point in time. And we reached out to smaller school districts and we said, "Hey, guys, are you in need of some chair desk combos? We would make you an awesome deal." And the Kansas City School District reached out and said, "Yeah, we could use 100." And we said, "Well, sell them to you a dollar apiece." Well, when they showed up, we gave them 200 because we had no other... I mean, it just hurts my heart to put them in a landfill. I mean, you know, that's taxpayer dollars and, you know, I just, I know they're old. I know they're rusty, you know, they've served their life, but I still just, you know... So when they showed up, they got two for one. And they were happy, they took them. But that's been our only bite in the last six, seven years.
And I think that that will then lead to kind of that follow-up of, do we look at local agencies in need of, when we are going to only sell things for a few dollars, of donating it to them first? Like are we looking out for Lee's Summit organizations that might be in need of things that we have to offer?
So we use GovDeals, correct? And so every one of those agencies that are on GovDeals can see them. One of the things we're exploring now is when something doesn't get bid on, can we avoid the landfill and recycle? So Dr. Shelton and Ms. Pataglia are exploring that right now of can we come up with some partnerships for recycling, say, old desks that nobody bids on?
Perfect. I appreciate it. And by the way, I like the flow charts just because they are helpful. So just so you know. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah, I will tell you that, you know, with the surplus furniture, you know, if we have a surplus of a lot of, say, vertical aisle cabinets and they're not selling, there's no one, the very first thing we do, let me back up. The very first thing that we do when we have surplus is we take pictures of that and we send emails to principals at all of our buildings and we say, "Hey, does anybody need this? You know, let us know, first come, first served. If you can use it, we will deliver." We want it out of our hair. And so that's our first step, that, you know, is to try and replace that somewhere else in our district. And then, you know, if we don't have any takers, then GovDeals. And that again, you know, is part of that board policy that that is our vehicle or our avenue to be able to get rid of surplus is to try to sell it on GovDeals. And then, you know, if it, we'll list it several times. You know, we'll have it out there for two weeks. They come to me, they say, "It didn't sell." Okay, give it, list it again. And so now they just know not to come to me after the first time it doesn't sell. Just go ahead and list it again. Because it's also timing. You know, it could be that... Because it's also timing. You know, it could be that, you know, no one needs these in December. However, right before school starts, they may need that textbook or they may need that desk. You know, there are homeschoolers that are also watching Gov. Deals. And, you know, we have, we have people that come from out of state. They purchase things off of Gov. Deals and come here from out of state to pick up, you know, some of the items because it's well worth it for them to, you know, pay $20 for something and, you know, drive five hours to get it and five hours back, it's still a deal. We do everything we can. Any other questions?
All right, before I call Dr. Buck, landfill is kind of like a trigger word for us, and so let's try not to use the word landfill. Dr. Buck?
Sorry about that.
So to go to your question, Board Member Murdock, and to Dr. Shelton's answer, DJF is going to be an item that we're going to discuss here in a second, the next agenda item. DJF, MSBA is asking to go to $50,000. So let's take, the city has a 75,000 dollar limit currently, and we have a 15. They currently, they're just wrapped up a best practice study. And I think, if I remember right, it cost 30 something thousand dollars to do that. If we would have done something like that, we would have had to go on a RFP process and it would have been delayed before we start. The city didn't have to do that. Their city manager could just go do it. So that's, that's where it is. Where do you want that line? That's up to the board. MSBA's suggestion for, for a school district's $50,000 across the state. City has 75. We currently have 15. So that's a great discussion point. But I wanted to point out it's DJF when you, when you get up into the next agenda item.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I just have two questions. My first question is during our RFP process, when we are advertising, where are we advertising? And how often are we giving contracts to new individuals that we're advertising to?
That's a good question. We are advertising currently, we used to advertise in the Lee's Summit Journal, which of course was bought by the Kansas City Star. So then it was, they were posting it in the Star and the Journal for one price. That has gone away. And so now our main advertisement is through Ion Wave and on our website. Because we, you know, we don't have to advertise every single bid. It's just those that are 50,000 and more. So. And then also too, when we're talking to our project managers, if they have knowledge of vendors that they know provide those services or provide those goods, you know, we're asking them, hey, who do you want this to go to? And, you know, we're also searching, we have people that call us daily and say, how do I become, you know, a vendor of the school district? And we, we tell them, go to Ion Wave, register with us. It's a very simple process. It's free. They don't have to pay anything to be registered with us. And they choose the commodities and the services that they provide. So when we put a bid out there, we're choosing those same commodities and services, and it automatically pushes it to them. So they get it right in their email.
Thank you for that answer. As a follow-up, how many small businesses do we give contracts to? Only reason why I ask is because I know we're a large district. To Dr. Shelton's point, we're the largest employer for the City of Lee's Summit. But also I value small businesses. And so I'm curious to know, from a district standpoint, do we also seek to give business to small businesses?
I would say that I don't have that information right off the top of my head, but I can provide that to you pretty easily, I believe. I will say that, you know, we have a lot of local vendors that we work with that I would consider small businesses. You know, I mentioned chain link fencing. You know, our current vendor for that is homegrown Lee's Summit individual that has grown his business partly because of the business that the, you know, the school district gives him. You know, there are lots of other stories like that. And we do, you know, it's been, sometimes it's kind of a challenge for the smaller groups to, to do things electronically through this bidding process. And what we do is we offer to bring them in. We walk them through that process. Heather has, you know, another, Heather in our office, she's brought people in and, you know, she's, she said, I can't fill this bid out for you, but if you want to sit in our office, in our conference room and do it, and then when you have a question, I'm right next door. You can ask me and, you know, we'll help you with that. So we've, we've done everything that, you know, that has been asked of us and, you know, that we can think of to try and draw them in and bring them in. Short of having probably a reverse vendor fare would also be a good thing to do. You know, because that's where, you know, they come in and they can ask us questions on what we need to do to, you know, do business with the school district. We have participated in several of those that have been through our purchasing chapter, our local purchasing chapter. And I will tell you that the City of Lee's Summit and the Lee's Summit School District have a line every time because people want to talk to us and they want to do business with us. And a lot of those are small businesses. So we do everything we can to help them out and encourage them to, to bid.
Yeah, if you can provide that information to the full board, that would be great. And then if, only if you track this, how many new vendors we have yearly that we maybe have not had previous contracts with, if you could also provide that to the full board, if you track that.
So you mean new vendors?
Correct.
Completely new?
Completely. New vendors that we have relationships with. And I'll just be very direct. When, I know in a previous work session, the question was asked, how do using an equity lens, how does that apply to like purchasing? I think that this is a great way that you can be able to view if, if we're using, utilizing equity lands through our purchasing RFP process.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Thank you so much. Any other questions?
All right, let's go to move to our next item. Dr. Buck?
Item 2.02, I might ask Dr. David Carlson come up. So this is your board policy update. So MSBA sent out two tranches. They have 22B and 23A. There are five policies that are not in here that'll be at the work session, not the work session, the board retreat, I'm sorry, around BDDB, BDDH, KC, and two I's. And those are, have to do with some legislation that passed. And we got those rather, especially two I's, I think we just received them from MSBA. And they, they're allowing you to have some input then. There's also a third section here, the I series and other recommended revisions. So when it first came three years ago, it created the board policy committee. And Dr. Carlson asked him to facilitate it. That's why he's coming to the podium. And so that group, it picks a letter or two letters every year to, depend on the size, some letters have more board policies than others, to review current practice and what board policy says and make sure we didn't have drift. And so we have a, I think it's a six-year cycle it is, and to make sure we don't have drift. And if we do, does what needs to change? Practice or policy? So Dr. Carlson utilizes staff as well to bring into the board policy committee, you know, information, what they can see from those. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Carlson to lead through some board policy revisions. And please do note that MSBA is transitioning to a new system. So it may look different for those who are returning than you had seen before.
Before Dr. Carlson starts, board, if you would, while he's presenting, hopefully you have already kind of reviewed these policies. So I'm not expecting Dr. Carlson to go through every policy. But then for us to be able to have some dialogue as a board, if there's some changes or some things that we want to talk about, so that we can make sure that when we approve them, because I think we're approving them actually in our meeting. And so if there's some things that you kind of want to discuss and change, let's get that done in this work session. Okay? All right, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. And, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk about the work we've done this year. I'm going to change my, my script. I was going to end with this, but I'm going to start with this since Dr. Buck teed it up for me. The board at a work session this spring did ask us to kind of develop a schedule for board policy reviews. We've done that. So, and that is a six-year review cycle that we'll go through. And just as an FYI, next year, we are planning on doing board policy C and D, general school administration, and then the fiscal management side. So just as an FYI on there. You know, we, as, as Dr. Buck described, we do have the two batches. We have a batch from 22B that was given to us in 2022 at the end of the season. That's gone through board policy committee as well as 23A. And then other I series, K series, and then some G series, other things that came through Team Lee's Summit. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions and work to answer those. I may lean on some of the instructional or operations leaders that would be able to give a deeper dive into some of these topics, like, for example, DJF, that's in 22B.
Thank you, Dr. Carlson. Dr. Buck, do you have anything to add? All right, board, are there any discussions on any of these policies or any changes or recommendations? Board Member Murdock?
I'll lead off again, why not? IKC, INC. So we had the discussion, you know, around class rankings and changing that particular policy. It has been customary in graduations previous, obviously, that principals are recognizing far more than 1% to begin with, understanding that then we give the medals for the valedictorian and salutatorian. Do we anticipate that practice continuing, even though we're now going to memorialize in policy that we're recognizing the top 1%? Which would obviously be less than what they have previously been recognizing. Just want to make sure that we understand where the principals are, knowing what they are going to be recognizing, not recognizing, it's still their choice to go above and beyond that.
And with that, I'm going to let Dr. Potts speak to the details on that.
If I misunderstood your question, just make sure you let me know. So here, what they're asking right now is just to replace the valedictorian and the salutatorian in policy in terms of recognition. As you know, if you've been to graduations before, they've named
Far more.
They've, they've, they've named, those students haven't come to the stage, but they've recognized them by name. And then those other students have come up. That part of it is, is going to be building decisions. There are conversations about adding the recognition around a Latin awards system, which would not require board action. And you, for example, like they do in college, summa cum laude, magna cum laude. And they would set GPA ranges for those recognitions, and they would recognize a large number of kids. So in addition to the, the top 1%. So there is, there is, there is a desire by the principals to recognize more students for their academic achievement. So I don't know if that helps in answers.
That, that answered my question, though. You opened a can with the summa cum laude, but I'll save that question for later because that just spurred a lot of, a lot of thoughts in my brain right there. So that, that does, that does make sense to me. So the, the top 1%, so when we have 500 kids, we'll have five kids that will be recognized up on stage, correct? And so in conjunction with that, and the reason I bring them up together is then in policy INC., we talk about speaking at the events. And one of the things that we're striking, obviously, is the student speakers for graduation portion of that particular policy. But the way that it then reads is it doesn't then identify, I guess, and President Sparks, this would be also probably for us all as a board to just make sure that it's worded appropriately, because then the very next thing says student speakers for other public district or school events will be selected based on whatever criteria. So if the criteria now is also going to apply for graduation, which I'm assuming it will, because we would still have, I'm, I'm making an assumption, we're still having a student speaker at graduation. We just need to make sure that that, the criteria for that student getting selected is reflective within this particular policy. Because right now, it reads to me, my graduation is excluded, essentially, even though I know we're striking that language.
Let me make, and Dr. Potts, follow this up with the answer. Clarify a question. You think number two should have an extra bullet, say, graduation speakers?
Yes, I absolutely think it needs to.
I don't know if you have the policy in front of you on the computer screen.
I don't, but it makes sense, right?
Yeah, yeah, because we're striking the graduation line in number one. We just need to make sure that now graduation is listed as an event that we're selecting speakers for and that we're applying the criteria to. So.
I hear you.
Okay, good. That's all, that's all for me for right now on those.
Anyone else? Come on, guys, you're making my job easy. All right, well, I just have one. And Dr. Carlson, I'm going to apologize upfront because I'm on the policy committee, and this is something that I should have called. But when you look at policy ACIB, which is the educational equity policy, and board, we have already kind of discussed this as a group. It is because we no longer have the equity plan, but we are going to have it living in the CSIP. One of the things that's being striked is a system-wide equity plan. And we're going to add, just say, equity goals. And then within the CSIP, I would recommend or ask if we could have it to say, implement system-wide equity goals. So adding the word system-wide, that's where it's assuring that it's living within our entire CSIP.
President Sparks, can you say that one more time?
So if you look at, and I guess I should also point out the location, apologize. If you look at number one, after where it says the Board of Education holds itself and all, okay, so if you look there, we're striking a system-wide equity plan. And the purpose behind that was because we no longer are going to have an equity plan, but it's going to live within the CSIP. I'm just wanting to not strike the word system-wide and have it to read system-wide equity goals and accountability for academic improvement.
Implement, implement system-wide equity goals and accountability.
Yes. Dr. Buck?
I want to clarify, I believe, Dr. Carlson, this is coming in June 22nd, board meeting for their approval, correct?
Correct. We'll have a, first, on this one, first read.
At the retreat.
And then second read in June.
Yes. So you will not be voting, I just want to clarify, we're not voting on this, this tonight. So we'll add that bullet. And we'll make that change in those two policies. And then you'll see those at the retreat for the first read.
All right. Is there anything else? Or any discussion or questions? Okay, well, this was a great work session. And, oh, no, you're, no, I'm sorry. You know, you're absolutely right. I'm sorry. Board Member Reslick?
Sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt you. I was like, wait, don't call. Okay. Can we talk about DJF, please?
Absolutely.
That's probably you. Probably Dr. Shelton. I just want to get some clarification around what we're changing with regard to what, what, what applies when we're talking about raising that threshold to formal bidding practices up to 50,000. Because it also looks like we're striking out the, the AP1 that would kind of put some structure around that process. So in relation to what we just talked about, when we're making this change to this policy, are we saying that anything over 15,000 now, we're raising that threshold to 50, so we won't see anything for board approval with regard to contracts that's below $50,000? Is that what that's saying? Okay.
No, that does not mean that you wouldn't see anything, that the only, that does not mean the only items you would see would be $50,000 or more. What we're changing in board policy is that threshold where formal, the formal bidding process would kick in. And so at $50,000, the formal bidding process would be, I'll say, activated. And then Krista and her team would, would take that on. DJF AP1, that administrative procedure, we would revise that. Now, as we've talked about what that might look like, currently, as you know, it's $1,000 for a micro purchase. Anything from 1,000 to 15,000 basically is a, is a small purchase, then a medium-sized purchase and a large purchase. What we are discussing internally, if, if this board, if this policy passes, is that the micro purchase would be still that, I'll say that zero to 1,000, because we have the P-card piece that we need to be mindful of. But then that threshold then for a, a small purchase, instead of going from to 15,000, it might go to maybe 25,000. And then after 25,000 to 50,000 would be that, that, that medium-sized purchase. All of those things could be, all of those thresholds, though, would have the expectation for bidding, different types of bidding processes. It might be, once again, that, that zero to 1,000 would be, still be that a couple of quotes, go to a couple of vendors, get, get a competitive quote from them. Amazon was mentioned, you know, other websites. Then the 1,000 to, say, 25,000, you'd get three written bids. That budget manager would get three written bids. But then at 25,000 to 50,000, that's when they would contact a purchasing, and purchasing then would get involved in getting those informal bids and quotes from, from vendors. So we still would have those, maintain those internal controls. Those thresholds, though, would, would increase slightly as we kind of, we, we look at. Those thresholds though, would, would increase slightly as we kind of, we, we look at it, we would, we'll decide where those levels should be. But 50,000 then would be where the formal, the formal process would, would start with RFPs and then coming to the board for approval before we could actually make the purchase.
So it's really just changing it to reflect, I'm pretty sure it's state statute that requires the 50,000, so we're really just changing the policy to reflect that. Is that right?
I believe state statute went to 75 maybe eight years ago and that's why the city is at 75.
Okay, okay. That helps, clears it up. There is a typo however, also in the policy, so. Probably want to change, the word purchasing is purchasing with an M, not an N.
We will also let Missouri School Board Association know because they're the ones that typed that. This is their recommendation.
Good thing we caught it. Okay, thank you.
And just to that point, board, understand that we actually have the leverage and the ability to even raise it above the 50. And so if that's some latitude that we want to give the district and we feel that, I mean, that's obviously going to be part of the discussion. And then we can also not take the recommendation of raising it to 50 and we can keep it at 15. And so I appreciate this conversation, the questions, but we obviously want to make sure that the district can move in a way that will make things efficient. And I appreciate the presentation that we did receive today that's kind of going through that full process of making sure that we're doing our due diligence as a district. So anything else? All right. Board Member Slick, are you sure? All right, all right, all right. This meeting is adjourned, thank you.